Good morning, everyone. Now that we're official, we'll call the September 7th, 2010, Jackson City Council to order, and ask Councilmember Johnny Dodd to lead us in our invocation and pledge. If you would, please rise.
I'm finally coming for one of them to say thank you for this day. Are we actually to give us the will of the GADMS to make the right decision for our great city? Are we actually to bless us one by one, or do we bless us all together, or there's all these things in Jesus' name? Amen.
Amen. With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council has received the minutes of the August 3rd, 2010 meeting, and if there are no objections from councils, no corrections or addition, we'll accept those minutes as submitted. And we have one proclamation this morning. We have some very special guests with us. We have some national champions. And if I'll ask the coaches, while I go down and get the proclamation, if they would bring the girls on up, these are the Dixie Darlings, council members, and they won the national championship about two and a half, three weeks ago in Dennison, Texas. So, we're here to honor them this morning. So, if you'll bring the girls on up and just line them up in front. It's a proclamation, whereas the Madison Central Dixie Darlings All-Star Softball Team is honored this day for displaying the high standards of sportsmanship and fair play. And whereas the players and coaches of the Madison Central Dixie Darlings All-Star Team consistently demonstrated determination and a willingness to win, which led the team to victory again and again against the best teams in the state and nation. And whereas coaches Jeff Cisco, Daniel Arnold, Michael Cliff, Ron Castergrove provided superb coaching skills which enabled the team to process the confidence and ability to play the best of their abilities. And whereas the Madison Central Dixie Darlings All-Star Team won the 2010 District Tournament in Jackson, Tennessee with four wins and no losses. And whereas the team then went on to win the 2010 State Championship in Lexington, Tennessee with four wins and no losses. And whereas the Madison Central Dixie Darlings All-Star Softball Team has earned the distinguished honor of winning the 2010 National Dixie Softball World Series in Dennison, Texas. Now therefore, I, Jerry Gist, Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, September the 7th, 2010, as Madison Central Dixie Darlings All-Stars Day, and urge all citizens to recognize the accomplishments of this talented team. And witness whereof, I, Jerry Gist, Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, heretofore set my hand and cause the seal, the City of Jackson, Tennessee, to be affixed the 7th day of September, 2010. Ladies and gentlemen, the national champions. Let me present this proclamation to you, and on behalf of the citizens of the city, the Jackson City Council, certainly want to congratulate you all on your national championship win. Not only the girls exhibited outstanding ability and their effort, but also were great ambassadors of this city, and we appreciate them, and appreciate all the time and effort that all you coaches put in. We know it takes a lot of your time and effort, and we appreciate what you did. So, Jeff, why don't you step up here and introduce us to the girls, your coaches?
I want to say thanks to Mayor Gist and City Council for recognizing us today. It's been a great ride for us this past summer. We've really put a lot of effort into it, a lot of practice time, but it did pay off. Also, I want to thank Rick Shackford and Madison Central Softball, as well as all the wonderful sponsors we had. If we hadn't had all these people that helped us out, we would not have been able to make it and do what we did. I also want to thank all the parents of these young ladies, because without their commitment of having everyone to practice and to games, and working with these young ladies, we wouldn't
Let me ask if there's anyone present who would like to address the council on any item
accomplish what we had. So, I do want to introduce these young ladies. First will be Jessica Cisco. Emily Jones, Ashlyn Cliff, Caitlin Edwards, Alyssa Garing, Haley Houston, Jenna Arnold,
under new business? If you would, if you would indicate that, I'll be sure and call on you at that time. Thank you. Item seven is first readings. Item one, consideration request to revise the elevations.
McKinley Shelton, Emma Hannaford, Kaylee Castergrove, and our coaches, Daniel Arnold,
Square footage for the North Point Lake PRD, North Point Sections 13 and 14, submitted by Bud Dodson. Morning, Stan.
Good morning.
Good morning, Stan.
Michael Cliff, Ron Castergrove, and Brenda Jones.
This item was presented to you, if you'll remember, at your last meeting, and you remanded
Again, thank you.
Thank you, girls, for what you did, and now I know you're on your way back to school.
it back to the Planning Commission, because there was some information that came out that was different from what the Planning Commission had been given. It was remanded back to the Planning Commission, and they have recommended denial of the request
The name Cisco jumped out a couple of times.
to you.
Okay, any questions from council?
He forgot to mention the grandparents.
Do you have the recommendation of Planning Commission?
Mayor, ma'am?
Sure.
It's my understanding that the developers are trying to meet with the homeowners association to come to some kind of an agreement on this, and due to the timing, they didn't have enough time to do that before the meeting today. Therefore, I'd like to make a recommendation that we postpone this for a month, and give them time to see if they can have an official meeting with the homeowners association and come to some kind of agreement on this.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to table this for one month, then properly second it. Any discussion? If not, council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
There's a public hearing scheduled, but that'll take place next month after the postponed one. Okay. Item two is consideration amendment to the text official zoning ordinance, Article 5, Specific District Regulations, Section 18, F8, Special Flood-Had District.
As a part of the National Flood Insurance Program, we're required to adopt their model regulations to remain active and a part of that program. These are those regulations that we have put into the zoning ordinance. There was some question that pre-agenda, Frank, I think you had about the border zoning appeals. Again, that is part of their model regulations. It gives some of, well, it gives indication that the border zoning appeals could grant variances, and while that is a part of the process, what you do is if the border zoning appeals does take that, they take basically that into their hands, and if they come back and say, "You issued that variance incorrectly," it can cause you to be in jeopardy in the flood insurance, you know, the flood program. So, we've never had a variance go to the border zoning appeals, but that is a part of their model language and part that must be in there, so.
My question is, is it part of our model language, not necessarily part of the National Flood Plains model?
No, their language.
As well, is that true?
They provide us this language, yes. What you can see, if you'll look at the, what was given to you in the packet, there's some
Well, it's in Section 6.
Some provisions that have been added.
Yeah.
The border zoning appeals section is a part of our zoning ordinance, and most of the things that are associated with the powers of the border zoning appeals are our regulations, but you'll see some inserted language in there that have, that deals specifically with the flood regulation, about variances to the flood, and those are the things that they ask to be inserted.
Well, my question is, and my problem with the border zoning appeals in this particular issue is it puts us in jeopardy, it puts us in jeopardy of non-compliance. In Section D, it says specifically, "We are supposed to be in compliance." If we have an agency or a group of individuals that are, that are meeting, and certainly well-qualified individuals, but if we end up putting ourselves in jeopardy of compliance or non-compliance, then, and I think that we should just abide by the guidelines. So, I'm, my recommendation is to accept this without Section 6, or any other references to the border zoning appeals.
We have to adopt their regulations in form. We can't, we can choose what parts we're going to accept. Now, what I can tell you is, we would never take a flood variance request to the border zoning appeals, because it says in there, there's some language that talks about, "You could only do that in the case that there would be proven that there's a no-rise." A no-rise requires an engineering review and analysis, and that must be submitted to FEMA to get approval anyway, so if you're going to do that, you might as well get their approval from them, not through a border zoning appeals action, so.
My point exactly. Why in the world have a border zoning appeals when they're never, it's never going to come through the particular process?
Well, they give you that ability because, for instance, in the, in the flood regulations, it allows the city engineer to make a determination on a no-rise, but we would never pursue that, because basically you set all liability. You say, "I've proven as a city engineer that I have proven that that is no-rise," and that's never a good situation to be in. We've only done it once, and it wasn't a situation that turned out very well, because you rely on the information that's getting, given to you, and it's, and it's not necessarily all-inclusive, so.
You're making my argument for me, really.
Well, they're there.
Yeah.
You're required to have them as a part, but we would never pursue those processes that way. It's like an option that you can pursue if you want to, but there's no reason to pursue those, and we would never pursue that route. But it must be there.
Well, that's the question.
Is there, is there a motion for approval? We have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Have a second. Continue discussion.
Yes, thank you. Again, that's my only real reason is that we have a, we have a board there that actually has, that we will, we will sit there and, and, and accept their recommendations, but we have no, we have no appeal to their recommendations. So, my problem with this particular board and this particular language is it accepts it, it puts us in a position of jeopardy.
It, there's an option that's there, but it's an option that never would be pursued.
My recommendation is still, and I'll make it as a motion, is that we accept this, we accept this without the border zoning appeals, Section 6.
There's already a motion on the table, properly second, to adopt the ordinance.
And there was an objection there.
No, there's discussion, which you just finished.
Okay.
Okay, this is a first reading on ordinance, so we'll open a public hearing to see if there's anyone here who'd like to speak in support or opposition to the passage of this ordinance. If not, we'll close the public hearing, and we have a motion and a second.
I have one question, ma'am.
Okay, one question, yes.
It's my understanding that, that we cannot delete any part of the.
To, to be a part of the National Flood Insurance Program, we're required to adopt their model language in full.
So, what you're saying is what Frank's asking us to do, if we did that, then we'd lose all our insurance anyway.
Well, you, you can't stay in the program if you, if you don't adopt their language, and, but again, the option that he's talking about and the jeopardy won't occur, because that option will never be pursued.
Okay, any other discussion?
One question. We've established that, that the National Flood Insurance Program requires this particular language, all of that particular language.
Yes.
Where is that stated in that particular, in the legalese in that, of that program?
Well, I can't tell you where it's, where it's stated, but we're, we're having to amend these because we didn't have a community panel number that was correct. So, I mean, this has already been, we already went through this once, and they didn't like that we put the Madison, they said that Madison County's panel numbers should be used, so this is just basically getting that correct. So, they're very specific about their regulation, and it has to be adopted in full and in form, or they consider you to be out of compliance, and if you're out of compliance, then you're not in the program, or you can be in probation of the program. And when you're in probation, rates can change, rates can go up. So, it's, I'd say you're in more jeopardy if you don't adopt it in full than some provision that we will never pursue.
But we haven't, you're not sure where that language is included in the.
I just know from practice, from, because we do this every 10 years or so, because the, every time they do a new flood study, they have a new body of regulations that go with it, just, just like we can't take their maps and say, "Okay, we're not going to, we're not going to accept that, that part of the city being in a flood zone. We can't do that. We can't change and alter their language either." It comes as a package.
Okay, we've had a motion for approval and a second. We'll have the public hearing. Council, please vote.
And the vote passes eight to one.
Item three, under first reading, is consideration resolution to adopt a redevelopment plan for the Center City Revitalization Project, District 2. I think we have some members of the CRA here. Appreciate y'all being here, and appreciate your hard work on that.
This plan for District 2 has been in the works for several months now. We've been through several community meetings and gotten a lot of input. I feel like this plan has been thoroughly reviewed and, and basically talked about in public meetings, and it has made its way to the CRA, and the CRA is recommending this plan to you. And I have Steve Alderman and Dexter Muller, who are here today, that will be able to answer any questions you have, as well as discuss anything you'd like to discuss.
May I ask, Steve, is Steve here?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Steve.
Good morning.
Good morning. I had an opportunity to read through the majority of this, but I haven't gotten through all of it yet. But I did have a couple of questions in regards to some of the residential units. We were talking about the plan calls for, on page 29, plan calls for 300 new and rehabilitated units over a, is that a 20-year period? Is that correct?
Let's see here. What we had projected was a maximum number of develop, of development residential sites that could be developed over a period of time. It's unknown whether that will occur over 20 years or 10 years. It really depends on what the market is able to handle and the, the demand for residential in the neighborhood. What we've done for financial purposes is to estimate a certain number of single-family homes and multifamily homes that could be developed in the first 10-year period from the beginning of the implementation of the plan.
So, basically, the plan really doesn't specify general areas or, or, besides the district itself?
Well, what the plan has to do, actually, is it needs to describe what is envisioned to be the maximum amount of residential development that could be foreseen in the district over the period of this revitalization plan. So, what it's doing is it's trying to set a maximum limit or a, a, kind of a boundary of how much residential the CRA should expect is a reasonable maximum to see in the term of the plan. In some cases, we've seen other communities where the residential demand is higher, and so over time, the CRA may amend the plan to permit it to help, help developers and help the community build more residential than what was originally imagined in the plan. It could be that market, you know, market, the market could develop in a way where not that much residential is required. However, this gives a, an envelope, so to speak, for the CRA to help participate and make some of that residential development happen.
And yes, Frank, there, if you look at your master plan, it, it does show areas that would be appropriate for a residential development.
My only worry was it was a little bit shotgunned, and, and, and over a 20-year period, I'm worried there's, the impact is going to be minimal, or non, you know, it's come, or not recognized as we should.
It's his best, it's the best that a plan can, can vision. I mean, nobody knows what 10 years from now will hold, or what 20 years from now. It's a guide, it's not a pronostication, it's just, it's just looking at what could possibly exist.
Thirty-four million, is that the approximate? Thirty-four and eight, that's approximate, now we're, is that correct? The number of dollars we're going to spend over the next 20 years?
Fourteen.
Fourteen?
Fourteen million dollars is a figure. You've gotten in front of you a series of financial projections that show what we imagine would be the tax revenue impact of private development over the first 10 years of the implementation of the program.
That's on page 34, 35, and 36.
Yes, that financial section goes pretty clearly into what we see happening in the first 10 years, and so that you are running up to a point where you can actually issue bonds for infrastructure and other public improvements.
The question that I have is, it shows on housing construction, $3 million over the next, whatever period of time, 150 homes at approximately 20k each. Is that both for renovation or new? And are these apartments in your broader scheme, or is this renovations?
Well, we have two line items there. One is for residential, which would be mostly single-family, that would ultimately be for homeownership. The other multifamily could be rental apartments that is of a higher quality than what you find in the, the district today in some areas. The intent was to have some funds be available to help with down payment assistance for, for homeowners who may need a little extra help in order to become homeowners and get out of the rental cycle. The other may be to help mitigate the, the risk of lending institutions to lend mortgages to those folks who don't have a strong credit history. Maybe they don't have a, have not had a habit of, of certain bank accounts, or, or have the financial history necessary in order to take out a conventional loan. So, this is to help work with the, the local banks in order to allow people to become homeowners and therefore invested in the neighborhood.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, councilman.
Let me, first of all, applaud CRA's effort with respect to District 2 development. I've sat in possibly a half a dozen public meetings concerning this effort, and you've heard the cry of the citizen, and you have a well-developed packet. With respect to the financial forecast in your TIF district, would you go over there just a little bit with me on page 35?
Sure. I'll actually ask Dexter Muller to describe that in further detail.
Can I ask a question? Something, I'll make sure you understand. The, the Center City District 2 and the East Jackson TIF forecast, that's the same area, correct?
Councilmember Buchanan and members of the council, if you look on page 34, and I'll just explain the difference between these three charts that you have. The first one is, is really what I would call build-out at the end of 10 years. In other words, what all might you expect to develop during that first 10-year period? You see it's a total of about $27 million worth of investment, and it's broken out with 50 units, single-family in years one through five, and then 100 units during the second 10 years, and that's just assuming that there's sort of a ramp-up period when you're starting to put in infrastructure and make the improvements, and the master developer will be working during that time as well. So, if you look at the summary here, the first thing to note is this does include both the city and county participating in the TIF. And in the event that one or the other doesn't participate, then obviously there's a financial impact to that, that ends up for the TIF side of it being almost half. So, this first chart represents basically the build-out after 10 years. It's taking a photograph 10 years down the road, and you see that with these appraised values, it would generate approximately $396,000 over in that far right, bottom right-hand corner, $396,900. That would be the money that once, after the 10 years is up, that you would then be in a position to issue bonds, because you'd have a predictable revenue stream. You'd know how much money was coming in each year, and a financing entity that would consider selling and, and purchasing bonds would, would know that that money's coming in, so it's a more predictable revenue stream. That's the time to sell bonds, not in the early years. On the, the second chart, you also do have, during that first 10 years, there will be money coming in, and this what, that's what this is in an effort to do, is to show you it has a cash flow for years one through five and years six through 10. So, in essence, what that's saying is that in those first 10 years, you will have revenue that comes in each year, and as that revenue comes in, it goes into a trust fund. You can use the revenues annually, or you could wait every couple of years, but this is a prediction of how much revenue would be coming in based on those levels of development that I listed on the other chart. So, it'd be for the 50 units and the 100, 100 units, 150 of multifamily and so forth. That's the cash flow, so it shows you in the first 10 years, you'd have approximately 2.5 million, 2, 2,535,750 is the forecast. And then in year 10, is when you issue the bonds, we would issue 20-year bonds. That's the reason why this request is for 30 years, whereas the previous one was for 25 years. The difference being, it takes 10 years to ramp up to the point where you have that predictable revenue stream, as opposed to five years under the District 1. And then the total there is total TIF revenues years one through 30. That's just showing those two added together. So, you have the cash flow, which comes in years one through 10, at 2.5 million, and then the bonds issued at about 3.9 million, so you got a total of about 6.5.
And keep it, keeping in mind with that, we want a collaborative effort with the county commission. If it doesn't happen, then we're talking about one half of these figures. Is that correct?
That's right. It would reduce the value from about 6.5 to, you could take out about 3.1 or three of that, so that would bring you down to about 3.4.
And Mr. Muller, that's, that's the 6.5 that is on page 35?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, if you look on page 36, what that represents are the potential sources and uses of those funds. And again, this is just an allocation based on what the plan anticipates work being done. Some of it would go to infrastructure, some of it would go to housing, some of it would go to small business loan pools and things of that nature. So, what this is showing is, and working down the list there, the TIF funds at about 2.5, that's what would come in during years one through 10, with both city and county participating. The TIF funds bond proceeds, the 3.969, that's when you would sell bonds at year 10, and it would produce approximately that amount of funds. The Neighborhood Stabilization Program, the City 108 Loan, and the CIP. The CIP, much of that has, or at least half of it, has already been allocated for a part of it, East Chester Street Project, but clearly during the course of this, there probably would be more than this allocated. I just didn't want to presume on what the city council and what future city councils might do.
Right.
But, you know, the presumption is that there will be additional investments for infrastructure, streets, parks, things like that.
We hope and pray so, and with respect to pooling of resources, we, as I said the other day, we hope that, Mr. Chairman, to the council, that we give a directive to our federal lobbyist group, the Ferguson Group, who is on monthly retain of our city, to help us find some funds for this. We talk about blending and braiding of funds, and, and we talk about the revenue streams. It's, it's of utter importance to what we're trying to accomplish. I know that it is 30 years. I know that you say the 10-year impact.
to housing, uh, some of it would go to small business loan pools and things of that nature. So what this is showing is, uh, and working down the list there, the TIF funds at about two-point-five, that's what would come in during years one through ten with both city and county participating. The TIF funds bond proceeds, the three-point-nine-six-nine, that's when you would sell bonds at year ten and it would produce, uh, approximately that amount of funds. The neighborhood stabilization program, the City 108 loan, uh, and the CIP. The CIP, much of that has, or at least half of it has already been allocated for part of it, East Chester, uh, Street project. But clearly during the course of this, there probably would be more than this allocated. I just didn't want to presume on what the city council and what future city councils might do.
Right.
But, you know, the presumption is that there will be additional investments for infrastructure, streets, parks, things like that.
We hope and pray so. And with respect to pooling of resources, we, as I said the other day, we hope that, uh, Mr. Chairman to the council, that we give a directive to our federal lobbyist group, the Ferguson Group, who, who is on monthly retain about the city, to help us find some funds, uh, for this. We talk about blending and braiding of funds and, and, and we talk about the, uh, revenue streams. It is, is, is the other report, the importance to what we're trying to accomplish. I know that it is thirty years. I, I know that you say the ten-year impact. Um, I believe that we can, in three to five years, make a difference if we can get the revenue streams together. And I, I concur with what you're saying. Um, some of this financial situation should be left up to the council and I pray and hope that my colleagues see the need and urgency for the revitalization of this area. There are other funding streams beside what you have listed on this paper. Now, we're for collaborative effort. We're talking about CDBG, uh, funds. We're, we're talking about the, uh, the, uh, affordable housing CDC that we can work in collaborative efforts with. And Dr. Lake, uh, you're such a, 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 a great and, and capable grant writer and I hope that you, you can help us seek these funds out. So I am a firm believer that, that we must have these funds to do it. I sit on this council for a lot of years and I, I've seen the ULI study and, uh, because of lack of funding, uh, nothing was done. Uh, what the CRA has done is commendable, but I don't want to, five, six years, seven years from now, say we, we don't have the funds. We don't have the funds. We have the plan. So there's a lot of pooling of resources and revenue streams that we're gonna have to seek out and it's not all on CRA.
Mayor.
Any other, any other questions?
Yes, sir, I have one.
Go ahead.
Uh, taking in consideration the TIF monies and the, the county commission's history in not participating, how is that going to affect the timeline in what we want to accomplish?
Well, the first thing is that, um, if you look at the total amount of revenue that we have here, it's about fourteen million. And if the county didn't participate, that would take out about, you know, three-point-three or three-point-four. Uh, so that brings you down to about eleven million. Uh, that may not sound like a huge percentage, but that represents about, you know, twenty percent and a little over that. Uh, and I think it, it would affect it because that's some of the money that's gonna come in early. Uh, you know, in the first five years, you know, you'd have a million or so dollars that you can use for housing and other things. And, um, I think it's important for the county, you know, to participate this, if they, in this, if they can see the, the wisdom of it. It is building the county's tax base.
Well, I just think we need to be realistic. I mean, they haven't participated in the past and, you know.
And I, I guess I, it, it feels to me like this is a little bit different. Uh, I realize that Lambeth area was also affected and the first district was affected by the tornado, but certainly East Jackson was affected pretty significantly. And, you know, reinvesting in back in an area like that and, you know, we'll be there with you to, to make the plea. Uh, if it doesn't happen, then, uh, as Mr. Buchanan pointed out, Councilman Buchanan, that means that you need to try to make that money up with, with grants and other sources. Uh, there does seem to be, by the way, you've got a very good lobbying group. I happen to know of some of their work and I've seen they, they're one of the best. Uh, and there does seem to be a little bit of, more of a focus in some of the housing and, and the, uh, the block grant programs to move a little bit below the large cities. You know, instead of just Nashville, Knoxville, Memphis, Chattanooga, I think some of the work has been done in those communities and they're starting to focus on some of the communities, the metro area is the size of Jackson. So that, that does give some opportunity there.
Mayor, if I may.
Sure.
Mr. Muller, I think in, as a follow-up to Councilman Rahm's, uh, comment, uh, I think it would be helpful, I know to me, to, uh, take a look at the sources and uses of funding without, uh, participation from the county. Uh, and I don't know how quickly you guys can get those numbers to us, but I, I, I think that would be helpful, I know, to, to myself. Uh, my, my second question is how much, uh, input from the master developer did we get as it relates to the table that is on page thirty-four?
This was done really before the master developer was selected. And so the, the expectation would be this i- is, is not anything set in stone by any means.
Right.
Because the CRA, I mean, this ends up being a flexible process. They could, if they see that housing construction is really taking off, they may want to shift some funds to that. If, if, if one area is progressing very well, uh, you see that we have some resources in here for the community center. Uh, you know, there may be either other resources or that may be something that gets held up. Yeah, so the CRA would have the flexibility as the master developer, hopefully as you approve that today or consider that today, uh, to say, I think this is where we need to go first. So there certainly is flexibility in that. I'd be glad to, to, uh, to redo the sources and uses.
I know that'd be helpful to me. Relative to the community center, since you've mentioned it, it says to renovate an existing structure. Sam, uh, Stan, I'm sorry, where, where is that? The community center?
If you were to.
It says, it, it, it says to renovate an existing structure.
Let me just answer that. There were, there were a couple of facilities that were in the neighborhood, um, that, one is over by the health department. Um, and, you know, we didn't do an analysis, a structural analysis of that facility. It, it was well-located from a operational standpoint, but I don't know that you could, you know, renovate the building for this.
Okay.
Also, uh, there was a proposal that came in and we didn't want to preclude this. Uh, but there was, uh, I believe there was a church facility that a gentleman had been working on. He came to a couple of the meetings. He said, look, I already have the property. I'm ready to go. You know, there will be a lot of issues working out 'cause you, you know, you couldn't use public monies just to enrich a private piece of property.
Right.
So there were a lot of issues in that. We didn't want to specify this is the place. Uh, we figured that that would come, uh, as you work through the, the plan and looked at the options for where you might develop it.
So relative to the number of residential units that would be, uh, built, uh, single family and multifamily, that is a decision by the CRA or the master developer?
Well, it, they really are gonna work hand in hand. It, it's, the CRA is a funding source and they are, they have to approve the allocation of any funds in different categories. The master developer is going to be the one that's on the ground out in neighborhoods saying, talking with other developers because, you know, the master developer's role is not to do everything by himself. And it's to bring in other, uh, investors, other people. There would be builders, uh, and, and obviously we know that there's some folks that are interested in potentially doing a, you know, retail strip center. It would be working with those people to make those things happen, going back to the CRA and that would be their team member on the ground carrying the ball.
I'm not quite as concerned about that. I think that's gonna happen. Uh, my, my real concerners are the residential units that would be built.
Well, I, and let me address some of that. You know, again, this is a, over a period of years.
Right.
Um, and because of the age of some of the housing stock in East Jackson, some of that will come just in turnover, uh, as, as units are demolished and new units come online. So, so some of that will not all be new subdivision-type, uh, construction, even though we are looking at some key areas that, that could be new construction subdivision-type development. So again, uh, this is, this is probably is a clear, uh, look, we can look into a fuzzy future. I mean, nobody knows what the future holds. Uh, but, uh, the master developer, I will say that the master development process started when we had a draft. All the master developers, us, uh, people that were, we sent some mittles to, had access to that information. So, so they were aware of what was being proposed and in discussions we had in interviewing the master development candidates that we received, we talked about those parameters and we said, tell us if you think those are viable or not. So, so we, they had input into that.
That was my question.
Yes.
And, and, uh, I, I do see on the math and the study that where the residential, uh, areas are proposed and, uh, we're very thankful for that. Thank you. That's all I have.
Mayor? Sure.
I have a couple of questions. On the, the chart you're looking at on page thirty-six, where it's got the down payment assist, I'm sorry, the housing construction of three million dollars, is that gonna be form of grants or is that gonna be loans or?
What we would expect is it, it's, it's often really challenging to get affordable housing built with market conditions. In other words, being able to go out, buy the materials, pay someone to do it. You may build a house for eighty or ninety thousand dollars and the market value in the early years may be seventy-five or eighty or something like that. But you need to build those to start stimulating the market. That's what it's for. We also have, uh, the expectation is that obviously twenty thousand dollars isn't going to build a house. So you have, um, the, there was some dialogue about local banks also participating in that. Um, the, the challenge many of the times that you have is having persons, if you're gonna build a spec house, that's one thing. If you're gonna build a house for someone, they have to qualify for it before they, uh, get ready to move into it.
My question, is that a loan or is that a grant?
Well, the, it, it's, it, it ends up being forgivable, uh, if the market value won't sustain it. And so I, I, I would say that there's a, if you look at the down payment assistance, that is a loan. The other is, the expectation is that that's going to be forgivable. So it's in essence a grant.
Okay. All right. The other question I've got, flipping back over to page fifteen, uh, Stan, this is probably much question for you, uh, is we've got Center City District One that's already been approved. That's a TIF district, correct? And we're looking at approving Centers, Center City District Two. The North District, District Two, is that the TIF district for the, uh, what the sportsplex is and that whole area?
No, that's, the, those are just the divisions of, uh, the sub areas that we created when we were looking at, um, you know, the, the CRA is citywide. So they just divided the city into districts.
Okay. So the, the, the TIF district that is there is, can you identify where that is? I mean, is that much smaller than North District Two, obviously? Is that just the area surrounding the sportsplex, Pringles Park?
On that, on that map you see with the blue line?
Well, yeah, obviously it's not the, the same blue line map, but I'm just asking kind of where that district that we have is.
You're, I know you're talking about District Two. Now, North District Two is, is different than, than District Two we're talking about. The Center City District Two is the.
I, I understand that. I'm asking about what comprises the, the area around Pringles Park where we have a TIF district?
Uh, well, it's not, it's, uh, it's, uh, it would be in, um, it looks like.
District Four.
Yeah, yeah, District Four, uh, which is not even a, it's not a redevelopment district that we're pursuing right now, but it's.
It's a small, it's a much smaller area than we're looking at here then. Okay. I, I guess my concern was that if we do, we've already done District One, fix to do District Two, I don't wanna end up getting the whole city in TIF districts where we don't have any more, new, new revenues coming in for the, for the city, the median inflation, those types of things. Are we planning on also doing the other city center?
No, those, the, the districts that we've shown there were more for planning purposes as we'd worked through the workable program. And, and while we could pursue them, uh, those areas are, have a different character and different tools are more appropriate to the areas that don't need as much, uh, you know, help in getting forward. So, um, I don't know that we'll have a TIF district, uh, in, in all areas and I don't know that we'll pursue any districts beyond District One and District Two for this time because, you know, it's a pretty big undertaking to, to pursue these two. So we're gonna get these, we're gonna get these on down the road before and, and, and see some successes with those and see some, uh, output from those before we start entertaining anymore.
Okay.
So our, our, our plan right now, at least what we've talked about, uh, with the CRA in terms of the planning process is District One and District Two were the ones we were gonna start with and, and let them run, kind of run their course for a little while before we look at anything else.
So we really don't have anything on the burner for adding more districts?
No, these were the, these were the areas that were, showed, had the most need.
Okay.
And, and needed the most help. So we started there. Some of these other districts, uh, it's more, uh, just some, uh, some other tools that might not be as, you know, as, as far-reaching as a TIF to make those happen.
Okay. Right. Thank you, Stan.
I have a couple.
Go ahead.
Real simple questions. Uh, in District One, we're taking a look at a building project in only one particular area and the rest of that is supposedly revitalization of, of existing, existing properties. In District Two, are we taking a look at just rebuilding or are we taking a look at a majority of properties being revitalized?
Now, we have, uh, in District Two, you have a, uh, new construction commercial center that's being looked at along the Chester Street corridor, which would be commercial. Uh, you also have some commercial development, new construction that would be on the Seventy Bypass side between Phillips and Cartmill where we have the land, um, there across from, uh, next to Park and Gammel where their property comes up to, uh, across from the schools. Um, there's an area along, um, James Buchanan that's being looked at for new construction of residential. And then, uh, there's some other areas for smaller pockets of new residential construction. Uh, and then the rehabbing is just ongoing with those things. So, so to, to answer your question, it's a mix. Uh, you have some new construction, you have renovation and you also have residential and commercial sides. So it's just like District One in that you've got a mix of, of opportunities. You just pick what, what priority you see is the first area you should go after. And because of the investment in East Chester and the street skate and investment by the Jackson Housing Authority in the area, we felt like the commercial, uh, center along Chester will probably be one of the first phases that will come out.
And this is to be assisted by the CRA and the City of Jackson and so on for the TIF district?
Our contribute, uh, our contribution to this would be similar to District One and then we have land. And that's the asset that we would be giving toward this project as well as our street improvements that we've made to East Chester.
On, I, page thirty-eight, we're taking a look at loans, which is, um, uh, I'm assuming that it's talking about loans the city will make to the CRA, possible loans.
It, it is. And one opportunity is i- if the city saw that there was this predictable revenue stream that was coming in in the first ten years, you could decide, well, we'll make a, a loan of some amount that you would use and then pay yourself back as the revenues come in each year. Uh, you know, it's not mandatory, of course, and you make that decision as, with a separate vote, but.
You're just leaving this option open?
Right.
Okay. Any other, any other questions from council? This is in the form of resolution. So is there a motion for approval of resolution?
So moved.
Second?
Motion made and promptly seconded and additional discussion. If not, council, please vote. Okay. I don't force consideration of resolution to select a master development partner, the Center City Revitalization Project District Two. Thanks, guys.
As you well know, as we've outlined in our plan, the role of the master developer is all-important, uh, in the success of these renovations and, and revitalization plans because the governmental entities, the quasi-governmental entities that, uh, aren't developers. We can make areas conducive for development and we can help with infrastructure, but we're not developers. We don't know all the ins and outs of what deals it takes to make things happen. We don't have the contacts. So we're looking for, uh, a master developer that can help us with this role. Um, we had an RFQ process very similar to what we had with District One. Uh, we received, uh, three submittals. Uh, we had a subcommittee of the CRA that reviewed, uh, the submittals that were received and a, and a recommendation was made. That recommendation was passed to CRA and that's the one that's being recommended to you today. Uh, David Hunt is the master developer, uh, that we've recommended to you. David is here and I would like, if, if the mayor will allow, uh, David to, uh, speak to you because, uh, we're real excited about David and feel like he brings a lot to the table.
Tom, why don't you, why don't you come on up?
Morning.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, council. Thank you.
If you'd just give an overview of, of, uh, your, your vision.
Sir, I'm sorry.
If you'd just give an overview of your vision for District Two, enter a tip.
Yes, sir. No problem. First of all, I want to, uh, take this opportunity to thank, uh, thank the CRA, thank Stan, thank the mayor and this council for allowing me to be here today. Uh, obviously, this is a tremendous opportunity as well as a tremendous responsibility. Not only in a sense to, to, opportunity to grow business in parts of Jackson, has not seen growth in the past, you know, twenty, fifteen to twenty years, but it's an opportunity to make Jackson whole. You know, I've been in Jackson now eighteen years or so and you've always seen growth and tremendous growth in the northern part of our city. You've seen growth in downtown parts of the city as, as far as the hospitals are concerned and, and as well as South Jackson, but you've just not seen anything in the northeast quarter other than out there by the interstate and new houses being built that way. So when this opportunity was presented to me, it was an opportunity for me to help in that endeavor to make Jackson whole. Jackson has, you know, like any stool, like any table, has four legs and in my mind, one leg has not been standing up properly, it's been wobbling. So my, my dream and my vision is to make Jackson stand up tall throughout our city. When folks come to this, come to Jackson and visit Jackson, I want them to know they can come to all parts of Jackson and feel comfortable, feel like they can spend their dollars, feel like they can, they can take their kids and they can do things with. Uh, my vision, uh, as it were, is to encourage people in this district to take ownership, first and foremost. This is the opportunity that the mayor and the CRA has given us to prime the pump, as it were. But to, to truly develop this area, we have to bring private investment in. to truly develop this area, we have to bring private investment in. And to do that, you gotta be able, you gotta allow investors to make money and visualize them making money. At the end of the day, that's frankly what it's all about. So my endeavor is to challenge the people in the community to fix up their homes, one by one, neighbor by neighbor. It's to challenge the churches in this community to invest, not just take, not just meet on church on Sunday morning at eleven o'clock, but to take your dollars and spend money in your community, to try to start businesses in your community, to help with unemployment, to help with just the pride in your community. All those things coming together with the city efforts can make this community whole and can make it what we all would lack for it to be. And that's my vision.
Thank you, Mr. Any questions from council for-
Yes.
Go ahead.
Appreciate your being here today, by the way. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
I've noticed you have a great resume. I appreciate that. Are you, there's a group of architects that are gonna be working with you in regards to this?
Yes, sir.
Are they part of this particular acceptance? Is that-
That's correct.
All right. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Two questions.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, we'll go.
Two questions, I guess. Is one, how, how did we select Mr. Hunt to be a master developer? And the second question, the compensation is a little vague. Could you go over that a little briefly? How would he be compensated then?
The selection process was an RFQ process. We sent out a public notice for requests for qualifications for a master developer, and we sent that to a good number of our local developers, as well as published it in the paper and gave our opinion to others. We received three submittals. One was a community development agency out of Memphis, one was out of California, and then David Hunt, who's local here. Those were reviewed, the submittals were reviewed by a subcommittee of the CRA that represents District Two. We have subcommittees that kind of oversee District One and District Two. They're made up of a small subset of the CRA. That subcommittee for District Two reviewed the submittals and made a recommendation of David Hunt to the CRA. Then the CRA met at their regular meeting, and they recommended that David Hunt to you.
Okay, did the CRA, has it just been approved today? We've already got that one?
No, our CRA, our CRA covers the whole city.
Okay, okay, okay.
It, you know, it, the districts are separate, but CRA is one.
Okay, so they're grouped in?
Yeah, they can do anything in the city. And so they made that recommendation to you. Compensation, we, you know, after, once council, you know, approves the selection, we will pursue a contract, similar to what we did with Hal and Henry's group, that will lay out compensations. Most of those compensations will be in the form of a developer fee that will come out of the projects. Once the projects are selected and begin to be funded, there are opportunities with, I know with some federal programs and certain projects, that the developer fee can be a part of that. Similar to on our residential, when the NSP program, the NSP program allows the developer to have a fee as a part of each residential unit development. So that's, that's the main form of compensation will be that way. It will be, you know, there could be other arrangements with, with Hal and Henry's group. There was an arrangement where we could employ them as a consultant and just have them on retainer and pay that. We didn't pursue that. We basically structured our contract, dealing with the parts that we knew, instead of having something just a continuing basis. We wanted to make sure we could afford to continue that arrangement. So it'd be similar here, that that fee would come as development occurs, as a developer fee out of that.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Brooks, you recommend?
I will yield to the senior counsel.
Councilman Buchanan.
I don't know where you get that senior counsel in front of you. But anyway, Mr. Chairman and to the council, and to Mr. Hunt, we appreciate your comments. The effect on end results, we certainly want to see a brighter day ahead.
Yes, sir.
And with you and your group of architects, we hope that that happens. I wanted you to say something, Councilman Brooks, because I'm gonna move that we adopt a resolution to accept David Hunt as the master developer.
Councilman Brooks.
Just briefly, Mr. Hunt, we are glad that you're here.
Yes, sir.
I was pleased to hear part of your vision, and it seems like you have an adequate scope of the challenges that we face. I think from my questions, you may gather that I'm very concerned about the residential development there. And in looking at your resume, I don't know if you have any experience in that area, if you could address that format, appreciate.
Yes, sir. First of all, for Wood, I want to answer Mr. Wallace's question he posed to Stan. I want to be clear about one thing here. I come to this, to this opportunity with the mindset that I'm planning on investing my own funds. This is not a situation where I'm looking at having the seat of the county basically give me some type of large salary and I basically sit back and do nothing. If I am to make money, whichever thing I do day to day for the support of my families to make money, I plan on investing my own money, my own capital, using my own credit to build things in this district, just as I would any other investor. I would not go to any investor throughout this city or throughout this state and ask them to invest in this district if I'm not willing to do it myself. That's very important in my mind to having success developing this district. As far as housing, that's the same way. We have to, we have to establish a place that's conducive to earning money, to have, to have anyone to come and invest in the market. And them not have potential to make money is not gonna work. So the first thing I have to do is I have to show a vision that, that if you come to this district and invest dollars, if we get able to prime the pump with some of the things that Stan has spoke about and some things CRA has within its power to provide a developer, we want to make sure that they come here with the mindset that they have people willing to buy, who are credit worthy to buy, who feel comfortable moving into those neighborhoods, those new neighborhoods that'll be built or remodeling current neighborhoods. And that's gonna take, first of all, us being one by one, group to group, going out, talking to people, having them understand that you have to take ownership of your own area. So before I can go out and ask people to come and invest and build homes, I gotta feel comfortable that this community, we're totally committed to making this community the best it can be. And then, at that point, we can go out and start doing those things. Now, in my vision, I think retail, as Stan had mentioned earlier, and some neighborhood pharmacies, and bringing some practitioners to the market, you know, East Jackson Clinic over there is overran each day with folks coming to East Jackson Clinic. So I think it's imperative that we first target the retail part of it, retail medicine, as well as just overall retail, bringing it to the district. But then, once we establish that need there, then I think building residential houses become much easier, because you've shown some success. And what we have to show in our district, in this district is success. We have to show a behavior that's conducive to making money for business investors, and that's the key.
Stan had mentioned that you provided input to the tables that delineated the number of houses and the number of multifamilies. That's, that's correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you were okay with those numbers?
Yes, sir, very much so. And I tell you, just as Stan also mentioned earlier, the marketplace always derives what happens in the business environment.
That's what makes us nervous.
Exactly. But, you know, end of the day, if you allow the marketplace to determine where you invest your dollars and how successful you are, you have a much better rate of return and much better foundation for success. And so I feel like this area that we're speaking of, District Two, has not been, I don't know how to put that, but has not been given the same market barriers, has not been, has not been given the same opportunity to grow itself through market, market conditions. And what I, what I intend to do is, is talk about strictly the numbers. I'm a numbers guy. I feel like-
We are too.
Yes, great. I feel like if you, if you were to look at, and I looked at a study, one of the things that enticed me about this whole, I forgot the name of the study, Stan, you might remind me, but I recently invested in a retail center in Marlin, Tennessee. And if you look at this district, not counting the PNGs and the plants here, this district has more capital investment, has more spending dollars than the city of Marlin and the city of Humboldt individually. And I've invested millions of dollars in building a hotel as well as building a retail center. Now, think about that. Why would I, why would I run away from my own district doing some of the very same things when there's just as many dollars there? The thing we have to do is train the people to take value in those dollars, respect those dollars, and understand they need to spend those dollars in their own neighborhoods. And we need to give them products and services conducive, similar to what it is throughout the city, to have them do so. And then everyone will have jobs, everyone will have opportunity. But it's all derived by you first believing in oneself, and that's where we need to go.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Hunt. I appreciate your comments. It's to be ready to be held to the fire.
Yes, sir, no doubt.
Well, I can tell you, he's got, he's got quite a few people that are already setting that bar high. But one thing I am pleased about David is, is he's not, he's not fearful of a challenge.
Great.
The challenge is what, you know, cast a spell or whatever you want to say on him to pursue this. And so he likes the challenge, but he wouldn't do the challenge if he didn't think the market forces. And he's talked about that many times to me, how government can't just continue to give and give and give. At some point, the market has to take over to make things happen. So he knows that government has a role, but he wants the market to have a role too. And he also, in talking with him, you know, the residential portion, he's more of a commercial developer, but his role as master developer will to do, to encourage residential developers to come alongside. And that's what we've always seen as this process. This is not for the master developer to do everything. The master developer is to, to guide and direct and to use his investments and his forces and the things that he is expert at, but to also enlist those that are expert in the other areas to come alongside. And I can tell him from experiences, is that, you know, the chicken and egg argument is all the time. You know, what comes first, the residential or the commercial? And I'll say, we're hoping in these cases it'll have to come concurrently, because the commercial will want to see the rooftops.
Absolutely.
And, and they'll want to feel that they are there. And so, and they also want us to know that there's customers. And the rooftops will create an environment that commercial will want to be there. So if they have customers, they'll come.
Right. And I think that's, Mr. Hunt, you'd agree that's your ultimate challenge?
Yes, sir, definitely ultimate challenge. But you know, one thing unique about this district is, you have so many manufacturing plants in this district, and those folks drive into this area each and every day, and they leave, leave each and every day without spending a dime in this area.
Sure.
Our real vision on the commercial side of it is to capture those dollars. Let's give those folks a reason to stop and eat dinner there. Let's give those folks a reason to have a family outing there. And in doing so, we create jobs in that market, which then, which then will allow people to build homes closer in that market. The next thing I see for is residential, why not have some of those folks that work at PNG, TBM, and places like that, build homes and buy homes in that market, where they're not driving all the way across town to go back to their home each day? That's the vision that I see. And then that's gonna take, as I said, one by one, us working together to make it happen. And I think that with the CRA direction and with the plan they've laid out, we're gonna be able to get that done.
Well, I surely look forward to working with you.
Yes, sir.
Wish you all the luck. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, guys. Any other, any other questions from council? This also is in the form of a resolution, and I'll ask if there's a motion to adopt the resolution.
There's been a motion to adopt the resolution.
Okay, we have a motion and second?
If I can get one little word in real quick.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to say a thank to the CRA board, but right now, we had a lot of questions, good questions that was asked. But it's time for us to make a commitment to this community. It's been, the people of the area has been very exciting. They've been working real hard, and they, the meetings that we've had in the community, the people came out and shared a whole lot of vision. So I think now it's time for our council to make a commitment to the people of that area. I think Mr. Hunt made, said one word, make it whole. And it's our opportunity for this board, this council, to make it whole. So I think we need to be committed to do what we have to do to make that area a better place.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion, probably a second. Any, any additional discussion? If not, council, please vote.
And the vote unanimous.
Okay, under item eight, we have one ordinance under second reading. First, and then consideration of ordinance to rename Quaker Oaks Drive to Pinnacle Drive, submitted by Pinnacle Foods Group LLC. And we have had a public hearing on this, a second reading. Is there a motion for adoption?
So moved.
Have a motion, second?
Second.
Discussion, council, please vote.
And the vote unanimous.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Thank you, Stan. Under item nine, new business, first listed is consideration proposed project for exit eighty-five TIF tax increment financing district as required in resolution two thousand eight dash two-three, section two. And I'll ask, yes?
You were gonna move item six to the top.
I was. Ms. Luna, you need to leave? Any objection, any objection, council, to move six up to one, new business? Okay, thank you. Let's go to item six. It's consideration of lease agreement between the City of Jackson, Northwest Tennessee Development Council, and Northwest Tennessee Head Start EHS for the Washington Douglas School Building. Anyone here? Ms. Luna, you want to, I know council has a copy of that lease, and we've been talking to Northwest Head Start, who's been a part of that building for years. And obviously, when the school system moved out the regular students, then that opened up some additional area in the building. We do have, the building has, has been reverted back to the city as a warranted date from the school system. So with that, Ms. Luna?
Good morning, council, mayor.
Good morning.
The, there is a termination of the lease that is on the table, and it is going to be enacted concurrently with the new lease that has been drafted for the city to sign, that will sign with Head Start. The, the need for that was, the old lease, of course, was with the school system. The, there's not much of a change in the lease. There are some, there were some pretty careful wording of liability for the city, but it's practically the same lease, except for it's a bigger part of the building.
And the term of the lease?
Well, the term of the lease, it's going to start probably in September, and I believe it's for ten years.
Ten years, okay. Head Start requested an extended number of years on their lease, simply because they have some major renovation to do the school, or to their building. And it's been needed to be done for a number of years. So in order to get approval from the feds to make those major improvements to the structure, they'd need a ten-year lease. So that's the reason for the term of the lease, and they've indicated that they, certainly by their enrollment of Head Start, will have access to the entire structure. So any questions from council to-
I had a quick question, if I may, mayor.
Sure.
Ms. Luna, are those requirements that the mayor mentioned, are those required by Head Start to make those improvements?
Well, the terms of the lease, the, the improvements will be required by the city. Any roofing that needs to be done, any heating and air work that needs to be done, so that the, it's a dollar a year for the rent for the lease, but the actual cost for Head Start will be to keep, to maintain the building up to code.
Okay, but, but, but there aren't improvements that need to be made to be in compliance with Head Start?
I'm not aware of any.
Okay, that's my question. Thank you.
Question?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I haven't seen the property, and I regret not having seen the property. So I don't know the condition of the property as it is now. Can you give me a brief detail of what it looks like?
I haven't been there either, but from what I understand, Head Start was happy with the property, happy with how everything was, and it is being transferred back to us in fairly good shape.
So it's inhabitable?
That's my understanding.
Mr. Chairman, Council New Deck, I attended elementary school there and been a normal, my church is right down the street, is in good shape.
Okay.
What was that, council?
Did we hear a year? Did he give you a year?
It's nice to know.
Okay, basically, the term of the lease is ten years, and by agreement with the city, Head Start will continue to maintain the building and make some major improvements in the building, as far as the structural and your roofing and some other interior work in order to maintain the building. Still be city property, it'll be leased in for ten years. Any, any other questions from city attorney? If not, is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Have a motion made, the second and the second. Any additional discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote unanimous.
Thank you, Ms. Luna. I'll go back to item one, then. Consideration proposed project for exit eighty-five TIP tax increment financing district. Mr. Hanson, would you like to come up? And I know you have some people with you from architectural engineering standpoint. I'll let you call on anybody you need to call on.
Thank you, mayor. Good morning, councilman.
Good morning.
Thank you very much. First thing that I wanted to touch on is, I'm sure that most of you are aware, we're going through a rebranding with our team. We made the announcement yesterday, and we will now be the Jackson Generals. And there's a look at our new, new logo and what we're all about in the future. And really, as you look at the rebranding, we went back to the history of professional baseball in Jackson, and I just learned that actually professional baseball in Jackson started in nineteen oh three, and the last team that was here in nineteen fifty-four was the Jackson Generals. So we're, we're trying to go back in time and pull from some history of professional baseball, and we hope that really that'll help us increase the interest level of baseball in Jackson and help to really re-energize the community. This step that our owners are taking is just another step of their investment into the community. They purchased the team in May of two thousand- the community, they purchased the team in May of two thousand and eight, made a major investment in our community, and this is just another way that they're showing that they're very serious about being here in Jackson. Both of them are from Tennessee and would absolutely want to keep the team here. So that's just one of the things that we've got going on right now. The second thing that I wanted to talk to you all about is our proposed stadium renovation, and I know that we passed out some, some booklets earlier, and we had them for the pre-agenda meeting. If you have that in front of you, the tab two on the proposed stadium renovation, it's really our goal, we wanted to break this down into two different phases, and in phase one, which we'll call the pre-development stage, one of the major reasons we would like to get that done and do it this offseason, is really to improve the aesthetics of the backside, really the curb appeal from the interstate, where you've got over forty thousand vehicles traveling up and down the interstate every day, and looking at the back of the, of the stadium, we've got a beautiful stadium, it's very well maintained by the city, and we really want to improve the look from the interstate as much as anything. So with those two phases, if you look at really what it looks like right now from the backside, so as people are going up and down the interstate, this is a good picture showing, you know, what we currently have, what this beautiful asset looks like from, from the interstate, so it is in the pictures that I handed out to you, it's the front picture, so as we look at the pre-development stage, and we would like to invest a million dollars on, on this first stage of the project, our intentions are to clean up the back of the stadium, really get rid of all of the kudzu, clean that up, remove some of the trees that are preventing sight of the stadium from the interstate coming from the east side, and we would totally re-landscape it, as you can see, we would cover the back fence there with, with some other material, and again, this is in your pictures that were handed out, this is the second picture on just the pre-development stage, we would take the current marquee off of the clubhouse that's there that you can see on the first picture and remove that, so we would like to, to clean all of that up, and then in addition, put up an additional marquee there on the interstate. Also, part of the pre-development stage, and a big part of it, would be to continue and finalize our design and development work of the second stage of the project. I know that we put in some of the key elements in, in this booklet as to what the second stage would include and what that phase would entail, and, and we'll talk about that in a second. As part of the financing and how we would propose, we, we cover the cost of this, I really believe that the TIF district that's been created out in that area is working, there are dollars being put aside right now, and there are some dollars that are, that are shown here in the booklets as to what, what has been accumulating, we would use those dollars to pay off a bond that would be issued by the Industrial Development Board to cover the costs of this project. I think that there's several things that, that are important to know about that, all of those dollars, a hundred percent of those dollars would go back into a city asset, so it'd really be to improve the stadium, it's a great facility, it's thirteen years old, we would like to make this improvement, and all of those dollars would be part of a city asset. In addition, as we'd be working through this project, all of the work would be local, and we're trying to keep everything local in an effort to really create some jobs and help with the economic development of what's going on in our community. So if you look at getting into the phase two, we've got an added portion of that, what Jason just showed up there, that would be the banquet and entertainment pavilion that we would add, and that wouldn't happen until next offseason, so we would finish all the design and development work this offseason and come back to council for phase two of that project. I've had several questions from some of the councilmen, and, and I'd throw this out there right away, we would not ask you to approve and move ahead with a phase two of the project until we made a commitment for a long-term lease, we've got another year left on the lease, and as part of working with the city, we understand and wouldn't ask for any additional dollars on the banquet area until such time that we'd be willing to extend that lease to a long-term lease, to ensure that we're here in the future.
Okay, any questions of council? Al, the numbers shown on the existing revenue and potential revenue of the TIF, are those still pretty much on target?
Yes, we put sixty-four thousand was the first year incremental, the TIF works on the incremental tax growth as development occurs, and eighty-five thousand for the second year, so there's a hundred and forty-nine thousand plus interest with the IDB.
So, so with any additional growth out there, if any comes, which hopefully there will be, then the yearly, the yearly incremental revenues should be reaching close to a hundred thousand dollars?
It'll be a hundred and fifty thousand for this year.
Okay.
And then we estimate as the cinema and other things are completed, some of the structures that are going in this year, like the food giant, and Dollar Tree and other things, the assessor's office will pick up this half year, so as they mature into full year, we're looking at a hundred and eighty-two thousand roughly for next year. If I had to pay the number, I would say two hundred thousand a year going forward.
Just for, just for information, the council, the resolution that was passed on the TIF, it's really the council's responsibility to either approve or disapprove the project once it comes on board, and then the project will simply be transferred, moved over to the IDB to, to see it completed, as any, as it would in any industrial or economic development opportunity for the city. Any questions of, of Tom, as far as the pre-construction?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
I, I'm, I'm, first of all, I'm trying to make sure that what we're, what we're looking at today is, is just phase one, and phase one is nothing more than the engineering and expenditures, is that correct?
No, phase one, we would, we would do a major overhaul with the landscaping and removing of the kudzu, cleaning up the back fence area, and in your picture number two, that would depict what our intentions would be conceptually for, for the phase one, so it would be more than just architectural and design, we would like to take that first step of cleaning it up back there and making it aesthetically appeasing from the interstate.
Can you, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, can you give me a specific timeline and specific cost for these two things to occur?
Yeah, the specific timeline, we'd like to have the pre-development stage done prior to our season next year, we would start immediately with the landscaping and getting going on all of that, so we would be completed by April first with the pre-development stage, so everything would be in place on what you're seeing there in that second picture, and we would hopefully have all of the design and development work done from the architects, so that we'd be prepared to come back to you guys at some point thereafter for a proposal on phase two.
So what we're looking at today is only the work that you're talking about here, and then some, some engineering quotes, is that correct?
No, we would, we would complete all of the engineering work completely for phase one, we would have all of that done, and that goes into that million-dollar cost, we'd be getting prepared for phase two.
Okay, so the million dollars is for phase two, phase one, and then?
And then we would come back for phase two, that's correct.
I yield to my councilman on the left.
You answered my question. Okay.
Councilman Wallace?
Uh, the, uh, who's going to be doing the work, will, will the Diamond Jacks be doing the work, or the Jackson Generals, your organization, or is the city going to be doing this work?
Well, we'd, we'd be leading the effort with the work, and then we would, we would bid that out, we would, we would have local people actually completing the work, and we're, right now, we're working with a couple of local companies on the architect and design and the construction of the facility.
My question, I guess, is, we're going to pay you a million dollars, you're going to handle that, or?
Council, I think the way that'll work is, we'll just authorize the project if council so elects, send that directive to the IDB, that they will work with Al and the, and the revenue and revenue projections to go ahead and sell the bonds for a million dollars in order to go ahead and get the project underway, get the architectural drawings, engineering, dressing up the back with landscaping, getting the marquee in place, and, and also some vegetation removal in order to open up the park, traveling from the east going west, because you just own it all of a sudden, so we feel like that, that visibility is going, going to be important. So really, the, the council's project at this point is to approve the project or disapprove it, send that directive to IDB, and they'll take it from there, council.
I have a question.
One more time.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, no, council works, I'll yield.
Okay, and this is not relative to the, whether or not we should do this, this is just a statement, we talked a bit about this in agenda review, that this would officially deplete all of the funds from the TIF district to, to date, is that correct, Al?
Yes. You would be dedicating the TIF funds to this project as they exist now.
And, and that's after three years of, of collecting those, right, okay?
To the answer, councilman Wallace, we won't be paying them, we'll be paying the bond holders, the TIF person, the whole idea of, of TIF finance.
My question was, they're going to bid this out, you know, all those kind of things? Okay.
Be handled just as any, any industrial prospect who chooses Jackson, normally the IDB will handle that, they will build their plant, and they'll close the bonds and pay for the bonds. State's usually involved in, in some of that, but unfortunately, we're, we got, we got it all ourselves this time. The first, the first effort's a million dollars pre-construction cost, and then you all are to come back after that's completed and come in with, with phase two, which at that time, I can assume we'll have the, the total, the total cost for completion of, of phase two, and we'll also have, Al, hopefully, some, some new numbers, if, if they change as far as the revenue derived from the TIF, and I've indicated to some council members that whatever's authorized by council, if that development plans phase two is approved, that we cannot exceed what the TIF can pay for over a twenty-year bonding effort. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
To Mr. Hanson, or either to you, as it relates to the term of the lease, we have one year left, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you made some statement that you said, you said to some councilmen, would you repeat that?
Yes, basically, we won't come to the council and ask for any approval on phase two of the project until we have an agreement on a lease extension, so we wouldn't plan on spending any of those dollars for phase two for the banquet entertainment area until such time that we committed a long-term lease with the City of Jackson.
And my follow-up question would just be that we can't get that guaranteed before we agree to this?
And that's what we've been working with the mayor on, and, and right now, we felt that it's just, we'd like to get going on this, stage one, we've got a full year left on it, and with our rebranding and everything else going on, we didn't, we didn't really have time right now to get.
It's a timing issue?
A lot of it had to do with the timing and, and what needs to occur right now as we move ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Al, as of the end of May next year, we will be within, what, two years, maybe three, of paying off the stadium, the bonds on the stadium?
The balance after March first of eleven, which is in our fiscal year, FY eleven, will be two hundred and six, and then it goes down roughly four or five hundred thousand a year, so after four years, we would have it paid off.
Have it paid off, okay. Okay, any, yeah?
I'd just like to make a statement first. Councilman Dodd and I worked with Mr. Hanson several years ago, when there was a dream to have the Sportsplex, and I personally watched Mr. Hanson, Kylesford, and Paul Latour, how they went about the vision that they had, and with that vision that they had, they definitely created a, a development for industry here and business, new business, and my confidence is in Mr. Hanson, because of what I know about him and his reputation, I know the Jack, the, excuse me, the generals will be here for several more years, and I'd like to go ahead and make the motion that we approve this.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any additional discussion?
I do have some questions, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Councilman Wallace, you recognize?
All, all the TIF money that's coming in will be allocated to this project till it's paid off then, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
So if another project comes along that we like, we won't be able to, to complete that one until we finish paying this off or approve another one, unless we get a bigger TIF district?
Unless the, yeah, unless the revenue of the TIF exceeds what these bonds will cost us, obviously, there may be, the growth out there may occur, and we'll have more money in the, in that TIF than it would cost to pay the bonds off.
Okay, that was my question then, so, so if we get more TIF money in, but we've got more than required to pay the bonds off, we could do another project one down the road.
Exactly, exactly. Councilman, you do.
Yeah, one more question, and this goes to Al more than anything else in regards to the financial picture that we're looking at, over the last, in two thousand and eight, we had sixty-four thousand, and this year, we're supposed to supposedly collect about eighty-five thousand dollars worth of revenues from this particular district.
That's already over there, this, this year should be a hundred and fifty-one thousand.
Now, that's based on what prediction?
Well, basically, the assessor's office did all of the map group and parcels, and we had established the base, and the sixty-four thousand and eighty-five thousand are incremental actual numbers that occurred.
Right.
Then Stan and I went in and we looked at the building permits for the.
For the area.
For food giant, for deals, you know, I mean, for Dollar Tree accessories, and from the amounts that they said they were going to invest, we estimated an amount of that hundred and fifty thousand would be off. We don't know the exact number here, within a couple of weeks from the tax roll.
And if, and if property values kind of drop or shrink, or property development slows down a little bit, we might not see the hundred and eighty-two, but we, you're thinking that we'll see the hundred and fifty?
Definitely.
And so, that, that particular rate of, of, it'd take us, what, five, six, seven years to pay off the initial investment?
Yes, it would, I don't know what the IDB would decide as far as the, whether it's better for ten or fifteen, I don't know.
Thank you.
Okay, we have, we do have a motion, right, and a second. There's no additional discussion, council, please vote.
And the vote passes seven in favor and two against.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, council.
Item two, under new business, consideration Sportsplex sponsorship write-offs. Al?
Yes, Mayor and Council, you should have in your packets a, a list of the write-offs. Basically, and obviously, there are different details behind each one of these, I guess in general, we would say that the Sportsplex sponsorships were signed by individuals and ownership, some of that has changed, some of the companies have actually, the locations have gone out of business, if we looked at Guthrie's Chicken, for example, and we in turn, with council, have determined that it is not economically justifiable to pursue these, some of these also were made as civic intentions, as the Sportsplex started up, and basically, if you look at, and I guess I'm bragging to a degree here, but if you look at the five years of sponsorship, the first couple of years being very heavy, because some of them were one, two, or three-year sponsorships, we're looking at the thirty-one thousand that I just showed you, and then there was nineteen thousand that came about because of, we double billed, or there were some errors that we made in our billing, so we're looking at forty-four thousand nine hundred that totally we will write off, which is only one point seven percent of the sponsorships that we've had in this five-year period that have been billed and paid for, and I think any of you that are in private business would know that anytime you're below, and especially in today's world, if you're below two and a half or three percent write-off on a business, you're in very good shape, and we are running the Sportsplex as a business, it's an enterprise fund, so we would ask your approval on the thirty-one thousand portion that.
So move. Okay, we have a motion, second? Did I hear a second?
Yes.
Any, any additional discussion?
Yeah, a couple of questions, we, we've got a variety of reasons why. We've got a variety of reasons why some of these have not met their obligation. And I'm assuming we contractually, we obtained contracts on all of these institutions. And that, I'm just guessing, things like Gold Gym was a pretty big investment. I'm assuming that that was, that was, came out of their heart. But we only have a ten thousand dollars difference. Did they give the ten? Is that what they contributed?
They contributed ten, yes, right.
All right, thank you, sir.
Okay, any other questions? Council, please vote.
And the motion passes with seven in favor, one outstanding.
Okay, item three is consideration of First Amendment to the Waste Management Hauling
Yes, just to refresh everyone's memory, when we did the bidding process, the RFQ actually had a Section nineteen point zero zero contract extension and it called for the successful bidder, which in this case was Waste Management, to come back to the city after the initial five years. That initial five years will be up in July of eleven. And it provided for them to come back around the December timeframe and present, if they so desired, additional options for extending the contract with the city having the authority to reject any additional extensions. So Waste Management's attorneys have prepared this document, which basically, I guess the guts of it are in item two there. And basically, what they are proposing is that it be extended for an additional year starting in August of eleven. And this is the city council's responsibility now to decide whether or not we would accept their proposal. Let me just show you a track record of the rates. We started out with seven point six-six and the contract calls for a three percent incremental each year. If you remember back to that five years ago when we had the bidding process, that seven point six-six, I believe the closest bid to that was in the twelve-dollar range. So we feel that it's in, to our benefit to accept going forward with the eight point six-two and another three percent increase because it's just not feasible for another company to come in and give us anything near this kind of a rate.
Okay.
Question?
Sure.
This particular, of course, this initial contract, this extension, and you're right, it's all in Section Two, also has a, I think the original contract also has a surcharge for fuel, is that correct?
Yes, that...
And that, does that make up the remainder of dollars that we're spending each month or we're collecting each month from JEA's program? I think it's fourteen something a month for each individual home and something for...
Right, but you have to understand, this is the hauling portion. Then we have to pay the dumping.
Then we pay the dumping and we pay the surcharge.
And then you also have to cover, the health and sanitation has claw trucks that go out and pick up, you know, and supplement the waste management process. So it's that overhead plus the dumping.
All of the other, yeah, yeah. And these extensions, if we agree to this extension, if we intend to come into another agreement such as that handles or discusses the fuel surcharge itself, this would not alter us from doing so. We could end this agreement after...
Well, we would be accepting for another year, the agreement as it stands.
But this won't come back before the council until, unless...
Until a year from now, basically, yes.
Well, it will come back to this council in one year?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, Waste Management, in turn, could decide not to opt on their part.
Yes.
It's a two-part agreement.
So this five additional terms of one year each, it really just means one-year extension, really?
Right, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions from council? Okay, you better get a motion. Is there a motion for approval? Have a motion, second. Any additional discussion from council? Council, please vote.
And the motion passes with seven in favor, one outstanding.
Okay, item four, under new business, consideration of an application for a certificate of public convenience necessity for Christopher Allen Williamson to operate a taxi service known as Affordable Taxi Service, Inc. And we'll hear that.
Mayor, the tax board recommends that the approval be given for Affordable Taxi Service. They have completed all of their paperwork, inspection of the police department, and satisfaction of our attorney. So we'd recommend, number four, that that be approved by the council.
Okay, that is from committee. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any additional discussion? I think it's shown on my agenda as a public hearing, so rather be safe than sorry. So we will have, let me open a public hearing, ask anyone here who wishes to speak in support or opposition to the passage of this recommendation. If not, we'll close the public hearing. We have a motion, a second. Council, please vote. Item five is consideration of application for a certificate of public convenience necessity for Aramika Sakar to operate a vehicle for hire service known as Advanced Transport Company, LLC, located at one seventy Murray Guard Drive, Suite B. Also, a public hearing is necessary for this. Is there a recommendation?
Mayor, the tax board met and also will recommend this with one amendment to it. This company is buying a substantial vehicle it costs and they have it on hold. We would recommend the approval of this certificate of public convenience with the amendment that the police department has to approve that vehicle when it's purchased. It has not been purchased, has not been approved by the police department. We'd recommend that it be, that we give them this certificate with approval of the vehicle that they are to purchase.
Subject.
Subject to the approval of the police department.
That is a board recommendation with the certification as amended. Any discussion from council?
Have a second, Al, here.
Okay, all right. Council, please vote.
And the vote is hands.
See, we handle item six, we'll go to seven. Consideration of contract for Jackson Street Resurfacing Project and North Alley Improvements.
bids were received on the Jackson Street Resurfacing and North Alley Improvements. We had two bidders, Delta Contracting Company and Ford Construction Company, and the low bid was Delta Contracting, six hundred seventeen thousand eighty-four dollars and fifty cents. And because we knew that Harvey would want to know the streets that were going to be resurfaced, that's in your bid package as well.
I had some questions.
Oh, okay.
But it's okay, Scott's not here.
There he is.
Oh, he is? Oh, I'm sorry, there you are. Yeah, vanished on me for a second. May I?
Sure.
Hey, Scott. Thank you. Wanted to ask you only a couple of questions on regards to the work itself. Would you explain to this body about the resurfacing, especially the different areas that we're gonna be taking a look at? I believe you're talking about Channing Way, east of forty-five, Union University Lane, Watson Road, Ridgecrest Extended, I forty Bridge. And then especially the North Alley, we'll talk about that. The North Alley, is that where, can you explain to me where most of the money is gonna be going to first? First question.
For the whole resurfacing project?
Of the six hundred thousand plus dollars.
Well, I didn't break them down individually, but I can do that for you if you wanna know where each individual. We did a quantity estimate for the whole project and I can very easily separate those out, but as bidding it as a project, it is a quantity line, so we lumped them all together for the total bid.
The sidewalks and curb ramps on White Hall to Elizabeth?
That's in, we did that resurfacing in the last resurfacing project and the ADA improvements have to be done within the same year, not necessarily the same contract. And because the school area is right there, we, you know, we went back and looked at the ramps that could be put in and some spot sidewalk improvements to work on the sidewalks in that area.
Is there a sidewalk there now? I forgot.
There is a little bit of sidewalk and that's another reason why we didn't do that before. There's sidewalks just in that area. And of course, we resurfaced from Lexington to Lane, which the majority doesn't have sidewalk in, so.
The Lane Avenue East to Royal, from Royal to the railroad, why not continue that on?
Well, there's, that section's really breaking down and the others is not. And, I mean, if we had plenty of money, it would make sense to go on down to Middleton, but we decided not to do that.
I understand the others west of the bypass. Reconstruction of the North Alley?
The reconstruction of the North Alley is kinda done in conjunction with JDDC, received a grant to help enhance and beautify the alley. Receives a lot of pedestrian traffic from city hall workers and back and forth from JEA and of course, city court operates there as well. They came to us and asked us if we could participate in some of the improvements, more of the basic infrastructure improvements like resurfacing. And we agreed to do that. There's, all of the alleys downtown have, you know, I don't wanna say been neglected, but there, it's very difficult to work up against the older buildings and the drainage in the alleys, you know, a lot of buildings suffer water in their basements if they're nearby. And so we thought because this alley was heavily used and there was being a grant to make it look better, that it'd give us opportunity to work on the drainage in that area and do the resurfacing while we're at it.
Are we gonna put any lighting in that alley?
We are. And of course, it's lit right now and it's served by overhead lines, actually partially overhead, partially underground. And the thought was to go ahead and add the decorative lighting similar to that of downtown. It won't be exactly like that because they'll be up close to the buildings, so it won't be the double arm. There will be a one-arm light there, but it'll have that same decorative look.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from council?
Motion to accept.
I have a motion to accept the contract. Is there a second?
Second.
Second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the motion passes with eight in favor.
Item eight is a consideration of the transfer of a city-owned lot, one twenty-nine Morgan Street, to Affordable Housing, CDC, a local non-profit organization. Morning.
Good morning. First of all, let me introduce myself. I am vice president of Affordable Housing and also a client. So I'm very excited to ask for the transfer of one twenty-nine Morgan Street. We're already partnered with Jackson Housing Authority and Neighborhood Stabilization Program to complete two projects. One shortly we should have underway, and if you guys grant us this one, both of these can be underway at the same time.
Quick question, where is the other one?
One twenty-one Morgan Street is the one we're on.
They're both on Morgan Street?
Yes, both on Morgan.
And Stan, you make an ask, will they come back to us with elevations or anything? Or how does that work?
No, that will be a part of the CRA's review, but it will go to Planning Commission at some point for design review. This is part of that Neighborhood Stabilization Program that Healthy Community is also participating in through the NSP Program. They're partnering in that process to build some new construction. So, you know, this lot is key to them because one of the other ones they were looking at, they haven't been able to get the property on to agree to sell that one at a price that's based on the appraisal. So this one gives them another one they can start and hopefully, they can finally get that third one.
Thank you very much.
So we can look forward to two new homes on Morgan Street?
Absolutely. I'm a recipient of grant funds from Affordable Housing and was, got a new construction home back in oh-six. So I'm very excited about this project as well.
Question, I'm sorry. Specifically casted again with Councilman Brooks's question regards to elevations or drawings or requirements for that particular home in that particular area. I know that it's gonna go before the Planning Commission, will it also go before the Historic Planning Commission?
In the redevelopment area, it says if it's in a historic area, then it goes to Historic Zoning Commission for review. If it's not in a historic area, then it would go to Planning Commission, so...
That's a conservation area.
Yeah, then it would go to Historic for review.
And not through the regional planning?
That's correct.
Okay, any other, any other questions?
Move to approve.
Have a motion, motion to approve profit, second, transfer of property. Any additional discussion? Council, please vote.
And the motion passes with seven in favor and one against.
Thank you. Item nine is a consideration of budget amendment.
We have three this month for your approval. First one is a budget amendment in the amount of fourteen hundred dollars. Pringles Park is making purchase for equipment to use by grounds crew. There was no capital budget for Pringles Park, so this is requesting a transfer from the unanticipated expenses into the capital fund for the purchase of this equipment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion, council, please vote.
The motion passes with eight in favor.
The second budget amendment that we have today is also a transfer of funds to the Building Codes Division in the amount of thirty-five hundred dollars for training, for lead-based paint training that they need. Also asking for a transfer of forty-nine hundred dollars into contractual services for the police department for an A and E study to be done on the air conditioning unit for them. This will also be pulled from unanticipated expenses in the general fund.
Question. Police Department having an engineering study done on their facility of the new air conditioning. Does it, doesn't it work, I'm assuming? So why are we spending forty-nine hundred dollars for a unit that doesn't work? You don't know?
I'm only requesting the money that they've asked for.
Thank you.
Chief Campbell here. Chief, you got any news you can share with us on your air conditioning unit down there that works, that works about ten percent of the time and when it does, it doesn't work well?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Good morning, council.
Good morning.
Essentially, the study is designed to look at the whole unit because we have problems with airflow. Postboard, board that was originally put up in nineteen seventy-five has collapsed. We have air returning units that do not work. A lot of this was exposed after the flooding on May first where the original inspectors came in to look at the damage and discovered that there were some issues in the ceiling, air handlers that are, I think we have four air handlers that are like thirty-five, thirty-six years old that they essentially no longer make parts for. So essentially...
So the study is for what, though? I mean, exactly?
To repair it and see exactly what we need to repair with the unit. We continue to have...
If it's repairable or we'll have to spend seven hundred thousand, million on a new unit?
Yeah, I mean...
Yeah, we continue to have breakdowns, so essentially, we're going to look, we're basically patching the system and we're spending unbelievable amounts of money patching different things. And we need to actually look at it comprehensively to determine whether or not we need to do whatever we need to do.
Okay, thank you, chief. Any other, any other questions, council? Is there a motion for approval of this amendment?
So moved.
Have a motion, second. Discussion, council, please vote.
And the motion passes with seven in favor.
Thank you, chief.
The third amendment that we have today is also for Pringles Park to make a purchase for compressor replacement for the scoreboard. This money would be transferred to the capital fund from unanticipated expenses in the general fund.
Motion for approval?
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second. Discussion, council, please vote.
Motion passes with seven in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Final item is consideration of invoices over ten thousand dollars. So moved. There's a motion?
Second.
Second. Discussion, council, please vote. There being no further business, meeting is adjourned. They're being no further business, and meeting as a juror.
Wait, go on. All right, Bill.